Call this be an order, please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for a moment of silence. Please take your seats. Roll call, please.
Ister.
Savage.
Here.
Roche's.
Here.
Brumwoll.
Here.
Is there any public comment on agenda items at this time? Any public comment on agenda items at this time?
Oh, go ahead.
All right, please state your name.
Victoria Rosenkrantz. As you're going through the code, can you please, because there's not much information on here, so if you could please discuss those salary now increase, when does it start? And give us as much information, because this is a lot of change here. And potentially, someone, either one of us coming into this position, and this is happening before that's been decided, and you know, that person coming in has to look at all of that. So, as much information as I can understand would be great.
So, before the vote, Victoria, so Councilman Brumwoll looked at many of the salaries of the current code officers listed on here, as you've said there, and many of them are severely underpaid for what they do compared to other municipalities. So, for example, Joe Swope, he's part-time, but he's been retarded since he's been here for 30 years, I mean, doing what he does. He was only making $1,650 with his experience and knowledge and everything that he has done. Also, with the current code officers as well, they were only making $1,650 for everything that they do, all the knowledge, all the tech, not the testing, but all the trainings that they need to do. So, Councilman Brumwoll felt that to keep them here as a code officer in the city and be competitive, bringing new people in in the future and staying competitive, so we don't lose people to other municipalities, you know, do other code work, he felt it's only fair that we bring up to a competitive wage with others surrounding the municipalities, so we don't lose our current code officers and potentially, you know, looking at our other in-city employees to hire paying municipalities around us to do the exact same job. So, that was the reasoning behind some of these increases if they shall pass tonight. Does that help answer your question?
Yeah, I just know when he gets to that part, if there's other pieces.
Yeah, okay.
And it's not only myself, there will be others.
No, understandably. Any other public comment at this time? Please state your name.
Randy Buener, and I'm here to follow up on that question also, is, are they appropriately trained to qualify for these raises that are being given?
I mean, obviously, Councilman Brumwoll, once again, these employees that are constantly being trained throughout the year, obviously updating through the updating ordinances throughout the city, and obviously different trainings to help them. So, like I said, if it shall pass, we feel that they are adequate to do their jobs, to justify their trainings and to justify the salaries if it shall pass tonight. Please state your name.
Amy Buener. I would just like to reiterate, as I've said at the last meeting, to, we need to try to make sure that some of the training that's happening is working with the other committees, like the light committee, and understanding what is involved there. We have a whole group of people, none of which have ever been to any of those meetings, to my best understanding, because I've been involved in both of those committees for five-plus years. So, as we're training, making sure that the right people are chosen, that they're being trained, and that they're coming to all the meetings, and that will include multiple, because it's not just light. Whoever was with the light committee was also attending all the redevelopment authority meetings, to make sure that all of those layers were lying together properly. So, I hope that part of the salary increase and the trainings that are being discussed, that that's all part of a job description too.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comment at this time?
I just want to say this, I think it's not the best time to be giving out raises right now. We're at the end of the year. And there's going to be a new council member coming in. I know that there have been comments that were made, but I do believe that it's in the best interest of us to not give out raises right now. It's going to be a month and a half. And at that point, the raises will go into effect depending on the outcome of how the council person or person will be. Yeah, it's a 50-50 shot. One of those two is going to be on the council.
That's true. And we could also make the motion here tonight, like, that increases don't go into effect, but Jim?
I have a comment in this. People are underpaid here in the code office compared to some of the other municipalities. Now, two people resigned in the last couple of weeks. Even giving these people the raises, the code office is still saving little over $40,000. So, we're talking about a couple dollars to keep good people on the job, plus, we saved $40,000. So, think about that.
I appreciate you saying, and you just committed a whole lot of money for computers too. So, anything we save is going to have to go towards that.
Well, I don't know about that. That's all I know is what is going on in the code office.
It's pretty clear. And if you were going to be a justice in the code office, you should have done that during the pledge. When we're working out the budget. Not after the fact. And if people would resign, if they really resigned?
Well, that can't be discussed, because then that'd be against personnel. But regardless, if people don't feel it's them.
I'm not one to broach it up.
Well, technically, you just did. So, no, you, regardless.
I've got a comment. My problem is, just like Mr. Alex said, a 50-50 chance. And I don't see. He's got, I'm sorry, there you are, okay. Apologize. But the problem is, one of those two folks here are going to be the next councilperson in that department, most likely. And here we are structuring that department and not even allowing those two folks to have an input in. That's my concern.
Well, here's my concern. There's still a month and a half until they take office, which is, regardless who it is. There's still a lot of time for those individuals in the code office to go work somewhere else in that next month and a half, and then they're really off a creek without a boat if those people leave. So, I think we all have to, as Councilman Brumwoll said, pay people at their work, because we always discuss, at least I know you were big down DPW, how underpaid our staff is. And a lot of the staff are here because they're vested, they care, but we, as we can see long-term wise, we have problems hiring new people because our starting wage is so much lower than all the municipalities. And I know it's a tax issue, it's only so much money, but they hire good people and they keep good people. It's very important.
And I don't disagree with that, Josh, but I think we're overreacting at this point. I mean, if we were going to do this, we should have talked about this a month ago, a month and a half ago. Salaries were saying a month ago to a month and a half ago. They weren't any different then.
You are correct.
And I think another month and a half is not going to make a difference.
A month ago, those people were still working that resigned. Okay, so there went two employees. We want to keep the rest of them.
Here's something simple. If you don't think it's a good time, then just go now. It's very simple. But any other public comment at this time? Please state your name.
Julie Roche's. And no disrespect to any of the council members, but the same thing is happening at the school board. And that includes people that have already existed on the school board that we are told not to. So, if you're surprised, you shouldn't be.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
I do, I just, I just want clarification, because now we're talking about two people left, we're saving money. So, I guess what I need to understand is, so did you eliminate a position? Is that what happened?
No, so if you look in here, Victoria, we're moving someone into a full-time position, giving other people raises at this point in time. So, with the individuals leaving with these raises, we're still to the good in the code office. Now, to eliminating a full-time code officer, we're going to see if the demand is there with the proper training, better efficiency, what is needed and what is not needed.
And I believe that's going to be part of the discussion within the IC. So, there is one person that we did eliminate. There's one elimination in this.
And I guess.
You lost two full-timers. You're replacing one, that was a supervisor, a non-existent person.
Correct.
So, you're still down staff.
I'm removing someone who was only there for the summer help to be a part-time.
But that doesn't replace a full-time.
Well, I mean, we can hire another full-timer.
I didn't say that, Jim. I'm saying, to answer her question, you're right, she's right. There is a downsizing in the code office.
And just, just my other point, sorry, you guys, I'm sorry.
All right.
I just want to make sure you were going. Well, my other, my, I guess my other thing was that the last meeting, it was presented that, that you were going to accept out with your resumes or applications.
For?
For code.
Yes.
And was that?
So, right now, like, we always go from within first. So, we're doing, I'll say promoting from within first, and then seeing if the demand is still there, then look at those options, all right? Right at this time, we're looking to promote from within the full-time, the part-time, the summer help, the part-time, and seeing if the demand is still there for that person, then revisit it. But if the demand is not there, then obviously, we don't have to revisit.
Well, again, I'm just, my confusion was that it was presented to public that applications were being accepted, so that, that's all I'm saying, was that advertised. I get the whole hiring thing or whatever.
It was on CareerLink website and things like that, yes.
So, that's all, because those are the questions that are coming to me, and I just want them to be answered publicly, so thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to go over there, Amy, I'll come back. Please state your name, sir.
Andrew Reynolds. It appears that it's, the raises are to create stability. So, like I said, temporary, is it permanent? And I didn't see a line item in the budget that's continuing education to substantiate whether these raises are permanent. So, is there a line in there to say, yes, they've actually had trainings so they can keep the raise?
So, in the budget, I mean, the salary increase would be permanent, but even education being by, like, even trainings, that was ever referring to?
Correct, because you continue, you know.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know, is it in there in the code office for training? Is there, I know there was one in there in the past.
I didn't see, I just wanted to make sure, because if we're giving the raises, I want to make sure they actually have the trainings to keep that rate.
Yeah, I know every department has a line item for training, so I'm assuming it's still in there, I'm trying to find a route. Okay, yeah, but it is in there. I know, like, with the chief also, he tries to find as many free trainings as possible to save taxpayer dollars, so I know that's another route that other people take as well.
Yeah, I took a quick look, I didn't see it, but then again, it was a quick look.
It's in there? Yeah, Nate says it's in there. Please state your name.
Amy Buener. Have we taken a comprehensive look at what third-party outsourcing might be and the efficiencies that that may create? And when there's downsized and overload in the code department, which is something that we've also seen for the last several years, as things kind of sneaking behind, I won't say falling behind, but there's been a lot of overload. So, at what point do we consider what outsourcing a contract might look like that can help stabilize?
Yeah, so if you look down there in the discussion, I don't know if you have an agenda front, it says, you know, doing that with any IC at the very bottom.
Oh, we can see that, thank you.
You're welcome. Any?
Yeah, and I just want to be clear, I'm not opposed to increases. Now, the increases, if they do get increases, maybe an increase coming in January?
It's all depend, it all depends how we make that motion here tonight. We can make it that they're getting those increases come January, we can make the motion, if they do ask, they get them tonight and they end that treaty. Well, that's what I'm saying, or we can make the motion, this is your increase for tonight, moving forward into.
But as far as, you know, people being underpaid, we talked about that at our council meeting.
Well, Jim decided to do something about it. There's a difference.
But we're in the middle of the budget season right now, too, and it'll take us a while to.
Well, I say, if council shall choose, it's not important, they can just hope now, it's okay. All right, any other public comment at this time?
Just a quick question. So, you're, just so I understand, you're saying that if there is a raise, there's the potential for how the motion is made that the raise is reflective of what's to be given in 26, but just start prior?
Yes, like I said, if the raises shall pass, we can make the motion saying, I'm making this up here. The raise will go effective immediately, and that will be the raise that was considered in 2026. So, they don't get, for example, a raise now, the last month and a half, an additional raise beginning of 2026.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other public comment at this time? All right. I make the motion for the approval minutes, minutes from October 13th and 27th meetings, and reports from the fire department, police department, treasurer, controller, code office, health department, parsonage, and planning commission. Do I have a second? Chad?
Yes.
Yes. Good luck.
Yes.
All right, moving on to old business. I make the motion for the second reading of the bicycle ordinance, that is referring to the e-bikes and the electric scooters. Do I have a second?
Ister.
Savage.
Yes.
Roche's.
Yes.
Yes.
All right, moving on, IP equipment for Inotech. This will be for the phones that we spoke about earlier. This will be the phones around the city and to the police department, so. So, I think the cost. All right, so, for the police department, a one-time cost of $9,462.60 with a monthly charge of $383.00, and throughout the rest of the city of $18,843.94 with a monthly recurring cost of $708.62. Do I? Thank you, sir.
Ister.
Savage.
Yes.
Brumwoll.
Yes.
Roche's.
Yes. The police department fence, I called with the chief, we're just going to table that to a later date. So, do I have a motion, I make the motion to table, do I have a second?
Savage.
Yes.
Roche's.
Yes.
Brumwoll.
Yes.
Ister.
New business, Joel has a quick statement.
All right. Last week, we became aware that there was an issue regarding a property located at 141 North Fifth Street in Sunbury. We had the city engineers take a look at that property, and we got a notice from them that it needs to come down. It is a danger to society at this point, the way it sits. Apparently, the interior has already collapsed into itself, and it has shifted over a weekend from the winds that we undertook. That being said, Josh is going to make an emergency declaration this evening regarding 141 North Fifth Street, declare it an emergency, and it is going to be demolished in the next day or so. I'm making that announcement such that the, there is a clear understanding of everybody of what the emergency is and what's happening, and I think the mayor would like a, to make a motion as far as recognizing the emergency situation at 141 North Fifth.
So, going off what Joel said, I will make a declaration of emergency on the property at 141 North Fifth Street. Savage.
Do we need to book a mayoral declaration?
We don't. So, no motion needed. Thank you, Jim, though. But moving on to new business, Jackie.
Yeah, I'm representing the Superior Spaces project for the city this evening, located at 134 Chestnut Street. I believe council is aware of this project. It is the development of a new four-man apartment. The city planning committee did review this application on October 23rd, 2025, and they approved or recommended approval for three waivers or modifications, which are the waiving of the submission of a pre-application plan, the waiving of the submission of six copies of the preliminary plot, and the waiving of the specification for the final plans. They also, while reviewing the plan, made a recommendation for approval for the following conditions, which are a fully executed developers agreement, financial security to satisfy the city's attorney, a stormwater operations and maintenance parking agreement with the signatures and seals, resolution or evidence that the owners of the property can sign the plan, and then reference to a PON report, which we would like to have on the plan. That reference to the PON report has been added to the plan. Does anyone have any questions or comments on the project?
No, ma'am.
Would council see fit to approve the planning commission's recommendation to approve the waivers as well as the conditions?
Yeah, so I'll make the motion for the planned waivers, so, for the Superior Space land development. Do I have a second?
Second.
Brumwoll.
Yes.
Roche's.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Ister.
Thank you, Jackie.
Thank you.
All right, moving on, I'll make the motion to accept the letter of interest for the municipal authority vacancy to go to Mike Thomas. Do I have a second?
Savage.
Yes.
Brumwoll.
Yes.
Ister.
Roche's.
Yes. Thank you, Mike, for taking that vacancy. Moving on here, I make the motion to accept the lease for family food pantry. Do I have a second?
Yes, I guess.
That's replacing the yes.
Ister.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Roche's.
Yes.
Brumwoll.
Yes.
All right, moving on, Councilman Brumwoll.
Okay, I make a motion to, for a salary increase to Joe Swope to $20 per hour.
Second.
Roche's.
Yes.
Savage.
No.
Brumwoll.
Yes.
Ister.
No.
All right, keep going, Councilman Brumwoll. Motion doesn't pass?
Okay, I make a motion to salary increase for Lisa Hurd, and moving her from part-time to full-time, and she requires no health insurance benefits.
What was the dollar amount of the increase?
To $20.
Oh, I'll second. To move the $20 from part-time to full-time, no health benefits required.
Should we, Joel, should we split the motion, or the motions for the salary increase in the part-time and the full-time, or are they contingent on one another?
We should split them if they're not contingent as well.
All right, so I guess for first, Jim, can we go with moving from part-time to full-time? Can we put that in a form of a motion first?
Move from part-time, 32 hours, to full-time, 40 hours, promote to supervisor.
Once again, needing no benefits to go full-time.
No benefits.
Brumwoll. Which part?
Well, I, the way it was said first, I thought we were doing a salary increase, and then 32 to 40 hours, but now we're also doing supervisor thing.
All right, that's, okay, let's go from, all right. Can we do the part-time to full-time, needing no health benefits? Can we do that? Is everybody okay with that motion to start? All right, so I'll make that in the form of a motion, moving her from part-time to full-time, needing no health benefits. Do I have a second?
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Roche's.
Yes.
Brumwoll.
Yes.
Ister.
All right, so then, I guess we'll go with the next one of the salary increase that Mr. Brumwoll said, from the $1,650 to $20. Do I have a second motion for that?
That's Finch Yeager, yes.
No, 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 we're still on the same one, Joe, about Lisa, going, increasing her salary. They just wanted it broken up. So, do you want, would you?
Oh, they want it broken up?
Yeah, so you want a second, so you're seconding the motion.
Yes.
Yes, he seconded it.
Brumwoll.
Yes.
Ister, no. Savage, no. Roche's.
Yes. Tie vote, no motion. All right, now, I guess we'll go to the third part of it, of promoting her to the supervisor of the code office. Do I have a second?
Yes.
Ister.
No.
Savage, no. Roche's.
Yes.
Brumwoll.
Yes.
All right, tie vote, no motion. So, now here's my question for the rest of the council. So, they do not have a supervisor currently. So, who is giving the department direction of the personnel to do daily operations? Because we can't have four people doing whatever they want to do. So, is Jim giving?
I think, I think Jim promoted.
Okay, so now here's my next question. If something isn't being followed through, obviously, normally, a supervisor oversees it, and a supervisor is holding the people responsible, and a supervisor has to answer to the councilperson. Every department has a supervisor. So, right now, apparently, the code office does not have a supervisor. So, who is holding people accountable to do their job? Because obviously, Councilman Brumwoll's like, any of us, we're not in there 40 hours a week to make sure people are following their jobs and doing what they're supposed to do, so.
What training does Lisa have to be the supervisor?
To mean supervisory training or the training to do the job?
All of the above.
I mean, to what she has, the trainings to do the, I know she's done health, not health inspections, excuse me, the rental inspections, the regular ordinances such as the, check on me over here. Quality of life.
Quality means qualification.
She's, as, as, you can oversee the department.
So, I, so I just want to make, so I just want to make it clear, so. Well, yes and no, kinda. So, I just want to, okay, so I just want to, so, is Jeff, so it's clear here in the public, so is Jeff overseeing the count of the code office at the moment to assist them, to give direction to the personnel?
Yes, then we should continue.
Why, why doesn't it just like happen in the last time, a month and a half, until someone comes in there, sees what's going on? Because obviously, there's stuff that's happening, and then go from there. Because we can't just, I don't have to say, I'm sorry.
Well, no, it's, it's a good valid point. I'm just saying, like I said, we can move on from, but like I said, there has to be some type of leadership in every department for somebody to answer to on making sure the day-to-day operations are being kept. If we're putting Jeff in charge of that, then we have to make sure that.
Well, this isn't a night problem, though, this is a problem when, sure, somebody left a month or so ago and.
One, there, can I jump in? Nate, I don't mean interrupt you. What's that?
I was done.
Okay. Via our ordinance in our job description, Jeff actually falls between the supervisors of the departments and the councilperson, who is the head of the department. In that, therefore, for that reason, I think Jeff is automatically the de facto supervisor of the code department, pending someone else being appointed there too. And he would obviously answer the Councilman Brumwoll and the rest of the council, but I think that because of his job description and the ordinance, which creates his job, I think that there's no choice but that he is de facto a supervisor at this time.
Okay, that's fine, I said to make sure everyone's all in the same place, understands that, that, you know, that Jeff is.
Jeff's been there.
Yeah, that, that means he doesn't get undermined by somebody else. Okay, just want to make sure that everyone's aware of that. All right, Councilman Brumwoll, moving on, sir.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion for a salary increase for Finch Yeager.
Second.
Savage.
No.
Roche's.
Yes.
Ister. Brumwoll.
Yes.
Tie vote, motion does not pass. Keep going, Councilman Brumwoll.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion for Mark Goff, move from temporary out to part-time code officer.
At the same pay rate?
At the same rate.
Yeah, go ahead.
He is leading at the end of the month, but when he was hired by council, he was hired for summer help, he was never terminated.
So, we're just basically doing.
We're keeping, we're keeping him until the end of the year, till he goes back to school, but this makes it that he's not tempered, just legit.
That's what's the question. So, I second.
Same pay?
Same pay, yes. Same pay, no raise.
Part-time, no raise, yes.
Roche's.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Brumwoll.
Yes.
Ister.
Move on, keeping, keep going, Councilman Brumwoll.
Okay, again, I'd like to make a motion for Jennifer Buchanan.
Salary increase.
Salary increase to $22 per hour.
Second.
Ister. Savage. Roche's.
Yes.
Brumwoll.
Yes.
Moving on, Councilman Brumwoll, amusement tax ordinance.
Okay, next motion here for the Perpetuating Amendment, amusement tax ordinance.
Second.
Brumwoll.
Yes.
Roche's.
Yes.
Savage. Yes. Ister.
All right, Councilman Ister.
They're using the same company, they're using the camera systems.
Second.
Savage.
Yes.
Roche's.
Yes.
Ister. Brumwoll.
Yes.
Uh, Councilman Savage?
I'll make a motion for the approval of abstracts and vouchers for the general fund in the amount of $56,465.99, liquid fuels in the amount of $2,639.37. I have it somewhere. I guess. I'm sorry. Private grants in the amount of seven thousand five hundred and sixty-two dollars ninety-seven cents, and payroll in the amount of three thousand three hundred and eighty dollars and eleven cents.
Second.
Brumal.
Yeah.
Ister. Savage.
Yes.
Roche's.
Yes. All right, uh, moving on to discussion items, I just wanted to bring up this for council to see if they wanted to do anything or not. So obviously, we know two-fifty America is coming up next year. Uh, ought have been, people have been reaching out to see if the city was going to plan anything or organize anything. So I just wanted to bring up this up to council, if there's any workings in, in the May, do we want to do anything to the two-fifty? Or what the plan was, how we could, give us, at least let people know.
My, then, so I said it's the, I may designate for the county for the two-fifty, and I think the city could, we, if we do anything, which I think we should, we should coordinate with the county, the historical society, and there's a bunch of other groups that we can work with, if we have something planned. Um, also, Mayor, in the Northern County Courthouse, if, if people go in, there was a bell dedication ceremony that was done last week, so, uh, there was a beautiful bell done by local artist Pedro Reyes, uh, he was commissioned, he was chosen by the, the, uh, commission, the two-fifty commission, and it's in display in the courthouse, it's a beautiful bell with, uh, pays homage to the Edison, the light bulb, and the old river canal system, uh, in the main building.
Now we can relay the message. Thank you, guys. Uh, moving on to hence, uh, Councilman Brumal and.
Make a motion to.
Hold on, this is, this is a discussion right now, not a, not a vote. So, uh, I know Councilman Brumal, we had these folks earlier about partnering with NEIC to help perform and train our code officers and the rental inspections that take place throughout the city. Jeff, how many are there?
About eight hundred.
Eight hundred, Aaron.
Okay, so about eight hundred rental inspections take place every year, so we're gonna partner with them. Obviously, as they said about getting some pricing and doing that as well. So, questions, anyone, about that?
No.
All right, uh, moving on to announcements, uh, the sand parade will be Friday, November eighth at six PM, starting from Raspberry Avenue down tenth, Outmarket ending at Cameron Park. Uh, the tree lighting will fall at six-thirty with food vendors and craft vendors beginning at five. Uh, the next council meeting will be at, uh, excuse me, on November twenty-fourth at six fifteen with a budget meeting held prior at five PM. Okay, I mean, we just put, we put that on the agenda, we'll have to adopt. Is there any announcements by anyone else? All right, at this time, is there any public comment at this time? Any public comment? Please say your name.
Yeah, I have a question, and I don't know if you can answer this, but when I, I tried to call this afternoon to City Clerk's office and there was no answer, and I asked Jeff, and he said they get a half of a day, took a half of a day for a holiday. Why? I just want to know, why?
Because we wrote the handbook, I believe, four years ago, we put that in the handbook, and it's been there ever since. There's been talk about changing the handbook, and no council person has stepped up to do that yet because it is a very excruciating task that takes many hours upon hours.
I understand, but, I mean, I don't even get tomorrow off, but they get a day and, huh, I, I, I don't get it. Anyway, that's all I have.
Okay. Any other public comment at this time? Please state your name.
Victoria, I was, I was reading something, so during the, the KDA security LLC, um, so they're gonna be taking over the cameras from, over Enterprises, that's, that's what's happening.
Yes, they're taking and adding cameras, changing cameras, so, they've been working on the lock systems and the doors and so forth here at City Hall.
So then, Alert Enterprises, so we're not still paying him for the, the monitoring key, it's all, so, so is Alert Enterprises still monitoring? Or is the key taking over?
I'm not paying Alert any.
Alert was taken off of the camera system having asset, access to that.
That's what I'm asking, so that means KDA will be then monitoring everything, generally being with the cameras, is my question.
At this point, we're not, but possibly in the future.
So they're gonna expand on what, I mean, so right now we have, for lack of terms, a front portion that got remodeled early in the year. They, that, those camera systems are still working. We still have to finish camera systems in the finance apartment and we want to put them on the exterior of the building, like facing the parking lots alongside, so on and so forth. So they've been taking on the rest of the project to install the camera system, the wiring, to link it all together.
But also, as a police department, I like to add, uh, there is security and we do have alarm systems.
So my other question is, um, that we're videoing and audio recording in this building?
According to the signs, yes.
Why are we audio recording this building?
I don't think we are anymore.
We are.
So I have signs of.
There's, there.
One, one sign.
In the vestibules of, at least I know, the front office with mine, that there is recording there. Why that's there, I can answer that question, but it's there.
Okay, so, after my research, and I understand that this is a public building, so was recording the audio in this building, was that voted on by council?
To my knowledge, it was never voted upon.
Is there a policy on audio recording in this building?
To my knowledge, there's no policy on the recording.
So you do understand, regardless of this being a public building, it's a two-party consent state, and this municipality is really opening themselves up to a lawsuit, okay? So, and you do not have a sign on the front door that says it's being audio recorded, there is only one, and it's on the back door, and I made sure that I checked one out this evening, but I'm still really understanding, need to understand, why are we audio recording this building? And if it's for your transparency of conversations of citizens, I'm really encouraging the transparency of that council to citizens because it's lacking there of. And it's, so I think we really need to look into it, and something needs to happen.
Do you think that council's transparency lacking?
It sure is. That's my opinion, so I'm not gonna comment anymore on that.
Well, I remain willing to work for you on anything that I can do more to the argument.
That's good, but we have, we have lots of bills going out for cameras, and I follow the rights new, and lots of cameras, and cameras saying that they're in places, but then we had a destruction and then it said there was a camera there. So there's discrepancies on where the cameras are, what's being recorded, why are we audio recording? So I would really like a resolution on the audio because I, I just think that, I, I don't, I mean, I get it, you, you put in the security barriers, you put in the flexi-glass, you put in all of that, but I, I just, I mean, police officers are different because of body worn cameras, and that's part of investigation. And I understand this is a public building, just like Mr. Bartel was filming, that's, that's our right to do that, but it comes, you know, First Amendment. But I just, I really just have a hard time why we're just recording every.
Travis, can you audio record? When? In the weekend?
When the security camera system individual is installed, so. Which means, when they got installed, whenever they were up and running, they were.
So you cannot.
Oh, yes, within six months of applying.
I have a question. I have a problem.
Yes. Okay.
Are you recording in the, in your office?
No, 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 just in the vestibules, not in any office, just in like, in the vestibules, like when you walk in the code office or the front, the, uh, the mayor's office. That is correct. No.
And the reason why it's done, why I understand, because it would threaten to the employees. So that way we would have tape, I didn't know it was, it just came up. Well, now I have to ask, because she, so Travis, if there's recording going on, if anything right now, is illegal?
I'll refer to the city's next one.
Um, you're asking me?
Yeah, I, yeah.
Well, I, I'm just taking off what Vicki did. I don't think. No, I don't think, I do not believe it is illegal. However, my advice to council upon honestly just learning about the audio recording is that we would use it only at the times of necessity, such as if somebody is losing their mind in the vestibule. Um, at this point, we can turn it off. I don't think it's probably necessary to use it at all times if we can separate it from the video. So that's my personal opinion, but I, legally, I think we're okay, as long as it's supposed to be.
So we just have to find out if it can be separated.
Right, which it can, right. And I'm hearing that it can be separated, so I think it will be in the very near future. Is the skate park, park audio there? I have no idea. I didn't even know the city hall was, so.
Did you say yes, skate park?
So is that.
Oh, I, I thought, I thought that, uh, already, um, there's audio, which is, the camera was put up.
So for law, is it posted?
Policy to maybe, maybe. Yeah, I think so.
Well, it was also the trouble with changing vendors, frankly, I mean, that, that was, these are questions that I asked three months ago, and that was part of the issue that we got brought up.
Well, I think the other quite the issue is, were these cameras, any of these cameras voted on?
Were they what, I'm sorry?
Was any of the installation of these cameras voted on? Because that's a big price tag.
Yes, there would have been cost applications and then.
For city hall.
For, for all the cameras that were voted on.
We would have voted to pay the bills.
Okay, so they, so there's, there's, there's a lot of money that went on the cameras.
I mean, Joel, correct, we're at least correct in one, but we, we would pay, votes pay the bills, if we received an invoice and chose to pay it, then we voted to allocate the money to pay it. Correct, I think that makes sense.
Oh, we could do a resolution.
There's no warrants.
So Travis, can we not? Travis, you can't.
No, we already, we did it last, we did, already.
Huh?
No, we already did.
So it doesn't matter, you can't listen to it anymore.
I thought we put that in the motion to do that.
Doesn't that have to be?
Any other public comment at this time? Please say your name.
But I just want a question, my question is concerning the cameras and such, but my question is, is my understanding was that when the cameras were placed, that we did, that we didn't want to know, let the, uh, community know where they were so that people would not commit acts of crime at where, if they knew where those cameras are locally, am I correct in this?
Well, the, the cameras that we, I mean, obviously the ones that are in city hall, they were determined by different departments where they will be based on, you know, entrances, access, and things like that. I mean, and obviously the ones at the police department were there for the police, other than that, I can't speak, I mean, I can't, maybe Councilman Ister can about the placement of the cameras elsewhere.
But, you know.
Yeah, some cameras are placed in hidden areas.
Right.
And some are out in the public, as they deter, and of course, used.
Right, right, and I, it's simply because there are the areas where they're hidden, because then they would know, then if anybody's kind of gonna commit an act of crime, if they knew their camera was there, they would, they wouldn't do it, so they might just.
Trust me, the cameras don't stop them.
I, I, I said, who they might.
Yeah.
All right, so are you gonna kill the skate park one, is the question, can you kill it, Travis, the audio?
That would be the council, but like, my, my suggestion would be as it was.
What about the eighteen at the skate, uh, the pole?
I defer back this, this. Yeah, for purposes of tonight's, uh, discussion, I can tell you that we can't take action this evening, um, on that question. However, it is my inclination that there will be no recording at the skate park in the very near future.
Um, can we do the same thing with the ice rink pole?
Yes. The ice rink is, yes.
I mean, no.
Any other public comment at this time? Any other public comment at this time? All right, I turn this meeting.